Okay, I'd like to call the meeting of the Willetts City Council to order, May 24th. And, can we amend the agenda?
I'm gonna do the pledge first.
Oh, okay.
It says no wife connection.
Scott, could you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're gonna amend the agenda for a, I guess we're looking to add a letter under Council reports regarding a trailer bill regarding adult use of marijuana. And so that would be under...
11A.
Oh, sorry, 11A. So, oh, thank you. Under 11A, so, have the motion from the agenda. Second? Second? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
What's that?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Okay. All right. And, roll call, Captain.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Present.
Strong.
Here.
Warren Dean.
Here.
Jantz Gage.
Yes.
Megan Solis.
Here. All right. Public communications. The council welcomes participation in its meetings. Conference shall be limited to three minutes per person, so that everyone may be given an opportunity to be heard, to expedite matters and avoid repetition. Whenever any group of persons wishes to address the council on the same subject matter, the mayor may request that a spokesperson be chosen by a group. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the city council, which are not on the posted agenda. Public criticism in city council, commission, boards, and agencies will not be prohibited. No action shall be taken. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak?
Can't hear you, Jerry. We can't hear you.
Oh, okay. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak?
Yes, I'd like to.
Okay.
Hi. My issue is, what I write on my, every water statement bill that I get, water bill that I get, is that I pay, we get water service and we pay for water service, but we don't get to vote on the people who control the water service. So, I really, I keep asking over and over, and I'm sure other people feel the same way, that we would, we need to be able to vote in city elections.
In your name?
I wrote down, Ann Vanderhorst.
All right, Ann. Anybody else?
Thank you. My name's Kate Black. I'm a Willets resident for almost 15 years now. I'm a physician assistant caring for patients in a family practice in Willets. I'm also a small business owner here in town. I'd like to speak to putting the resolution for protecting immigrant rights on your agenda. I know that's in the works, and was hoping it would be on today. If I can't be here next week, I'd like to read what I had prepared.
Okay, go ahead.
The spirit of this is to send a clear message to the public and to the immigrant community that we support their basic rights. We're not asking for sanctuary city status, and I think it's important to educate people about this, is what we're promoting is not risking having federal funding cut and not tying the hands of our local police from being able to do their jobs. As a matter of fact, this resolution may take pressure off people to become more able to report crimes that occur in their communities without fearing our police officers. In my work, I talk with and offer a lot of care from people in Willets and surrounding areas, including immigrants. Some of these people are my neighbors, my friends, people who have worked for me, and some of them I would never come in contact with if it weren't for the nature of my work. That is to say, I have a unique opportunity to see people from all walks of life at their most vulnerable. Think about when you go to the doctor, or a family member is at the doctor and you're sick or anxious. So, I've done a fair amount of homework on this issue. I can tell you that my take on this, based on my work, is this is not just a political issue or a human rights issue, but I also see this as a public health issue. Immigrants here in Willets who are on the whole, family-loving, God-loving, community-loving, good people, are really scared right now with, I think, good reason to be, as they watch and listen to the national news about some families being broken up and separated. I think most of us are aware of the connections that have been made between high stress and many health-related problems, like generalized anxiety, insomnia, depression, things I see in the clinic. So, I see a supportive resolution, I see a resolution as supportive and as simply bringing some measure of relief and trying to build trust. What I'm saying personally is that I value our immigrant population and their stories, their rich cultures, and varied reasons for being here, and I'm willing to stand up for some of those folks who were actually too scared to show up tonight, or possibly next week, I hope I get to come next week, and listen to others, or didn't feel they had a voice. I believe that putting forth a resolution along with more community education and awareness is a good, positive thing to do for us in the city of Willets, and I really would appreciate you putting forth a resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate.
I think I misunderstood what your initial...
Yeah.
And I would like to change my vote to no on pulling it from the agenda.
No.
No, wait.
That's not that one.
Okay, well, then, I didn't misunderstand.
No, it's...
Has it been announced?
I went, one announcement, I was about to announce again, that we were pulling it to have it come back next.
We can't hear you. For some reason, is the mic system on?
Sorry.
Is the mic system on?
There is no mic. I apologize. We are pulling it from this meeting, or come back at the next meeting. After talking to our city attorney, there is an issue with one of the lines that we would like to look at. And to be honest with you, I was under the impression that that had been vetted already, and it got pushed forward, and we were gonna, because I did speak with some of you out there in the audience, that my concern, I wanted to look at it a little further. And after speaking with our attorney today, his advice is that we look at one of the lines, change a couple of words, and then bring it back.
I have a question about that. Isn't it possible to go ahead with the public hearing as notice, so that all these people that came to speak to it publish an agendized item, and then we can defer action if it's something that's too big to just correct as we...
I didn't see it as a public, was it on for a public hearing?
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
It was on the radio, and we brought a reporter here. There was a lot of effort that went into it, it'd be obvious.
And if it's a matter of just changing a few words, if we can do that when we get to an action item on it, maybe it doesn't have to be deferred, but it certainly, I don't see why...
Well, a lot of people left. A lot of people...
I know, that's...
You know, my concern is that I do want to put this on the agenda. It was my hope, and I did speak with some of you about having it on there, but I would like the correct language that we feel is appropriate.
Shouldn't that be a discussion of the council, Dr.? I mean, I did request that it was placed on the agenda. I asked for the consensus of the council that it be placed, and then I stated a timeframe. The council agreed that that timeframe seems reasonable. We're at the end of that timeframe. It's an agendized item. It's my understanding that if you want to remove an agenda item, that you need the consensus of the council. Is that true, or is that not true?
Well, that's true. That's true, but I met with Jerry and staff this past hour preparing for this meeting. We were talking about this particular item, and I had a question about paragraph six, about the appropriateness of the wording of that paragraph. And the mayor was, I think, surprised that this matter was on tonight, and had not had an opportunity to...
I did present this document to you at the last council meeting, so that you'd have an opportunity to look it over. It is on the agenda. The council doesn't have to take action this evening if they so choose, and also the council has every right to amend or change the resolution, so I don't understand why this is becoming such, it feels like a power struggle, rather than just trying to listen to the people that came here and heard what they have to say this evening. What is the harm?
Yeah, I agree. We, I believe, the reason that everybody's here tonight is partly, obviously, to hear the council accept the resolution and make it official. But I think even beyond that, what you're really here for is to hear support from the city council. So, you know, an action we can take tonight would be no action, but we could say, yeah, I like the idea, or no, I don't like the idea, and let's wordcraft later and, you know, accept the document later, at some later time. But in the meantime, the public will know that we either support this or don't support it. And I'm talking about the principle. The rest is detail. So, I agree that I think we should go ahead with it, especially since people are here.
So, Jim, what's...
That's fine, Mr. Barrett. You told me you wanted to pull it so we'd have more time to craft it and put it off for the next meeting. Given the fact that we've got a full house here tonight, there's really no harm in keeping it on, discussing it, and we can, we can either fine-tune it here tonight, or we can put it on for the next meeting if the majority of the councils wish.
And it was stated several people, quite a few people, already left because they thought it had been pulled.
Text them, get them back.
And I apologize, like I said, it was my understanding that some changes are gonna be made, and I initially was gonna make them myself, but I realized that that had been vetted, and in talking to our city attorney, that those concerns, his concerns, were the same concerns I had going into it. Nothing really big. In principle, I support it, but I'm prepared today if the consensus of the council is to listen to people, but that'll come after Prop. 218. So, if it's the consensus of the council to listen to everybody...
And I think we can even...
But I would request that we pull it for passage till next.
Yeah, we can indicate how we feel.
That's acceptable. I think that the people who came here today knew that there was four options. Either the council would approve it, the council would send it back for more research or work on it, that they could say no, or that the council could amend it here tonight. I think most people were aware that that is what could happen. So, I think just simply at least hearing them out this evening, and then with those comments and any concerns you have, then bringing it back at an additional meeting, that's reasonable. That seems like a fair compromise.
Okay.
Is it possible to consider putting this item ahead of 3A, or is that not...
Well, I think the issue had to do with...
We have out-of-town consultants here, and we made them wait quite a while last time.
Okay. And I think that if we end up listening to everybody in the public, they're gonna be waiting.
We can do it right there.
Yeah.
It'll still be early enough. And we need the audience.
We might wanna comment about this.
All right. And maybe, Jim, when we get to the item B, maybe you can just give an overview on the concerns we're in.
Sure.
All right. So, item 3A, 218 rate study with possible authorization to mail the California Proposition 218 notices. Gentlemen, your own.
Good evening. So, last meeting, we left to come back after providing you some more information for the, for you all to authorize the sending out of the 218 notice for the mandatory period of 45 days, so that we can then have the decision on the final rates in the last council meeting in July, and finalize the wastewater rates in time to get them to the county. The three options that you asked us to provide more information on were a water rate increase of two and a half percent with taking, with the option to take a loan, four and a half percent increases with no loan, and then we also looked at two and a half percent increases with no loan as well. And we provided a graph of where the ending balances would be over the 218 notice period for the next five years, and with, under those three options. And I guess, do you have any questions for me on the note?
Yeah, I'm gonna jump in. I spoke with these gentlemen before the meeting, so they kinda know where I'm coming. They're warned. The graph that you provided is a line graph. You don't see this, do you? Anyway, take my words for it. The option number three, which is a two and a half percent increase with no loan, shows that we drop below our minimum set point of $1 million in the reserve fund for one year in 2019, '20, 1920. And then it goes back up again. And according to the chart, I'm assuming, you know, it's fairly accurate, it looks like we're gonna be down to maybe $750,000. So, my question is, I wanna get this whole thing into context. You came up with the rate increases based on historical knowledge of, and also looking forward, of what our operating costs are, what future capital expenses are going to be, and essentially, the reserve fund is kind of like the safety net.
Correct.
In case something goes wrong. So, I don't see anybody from the water plant here today, but I, but, you know, maybe you can weigh in, or somebody can, but I assume that the water plant operators understand, they can look forward and fairly well predict what kind of expenses we're gonna have going forward. Obviously, there's gonna be the unforeseen things that are gonna happen. But am I correct in assuming that if we get down to the 750 for the one year and then climb again, that under normal circumstances, we're still gonna be okay? We're still gonna have enough to operate and, you know, be safe? Is that a valid assumption?
Yes, but I think one of the concerns was dipping below the threshold that we have on our financing, that we've made a promise that we would hold a certain amount in reserve. Is that correct, Suzy?
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure what the one million is.
The 1 million is a half year of operating reserves.
So, yeah.
But that's separate from the reserve...
That's separate from the requirement. The requirement was lower for the...
Okay, would you explain that difference?
And I, the, well, there's one requirement with the current debt you have, that you have to maintain a certain level, and this is a number that is, just to have a solid safety net, a prudent safety net, was the half a year of operating.
Yeah, but I, maybe I'm not understanding. It sounds like there might be some consequences from a bank or from somebody if our safety net drops down below a certain point.
Right.
Is that, is that true?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that our bond rating, or is that our loan?
It's from our loans and...
And what does that mean exactly? If we were to drop down?
Then they can essentially charge us more.
Okay.
Or recall the loan.
So, is that $1 million level, is that the drop deadline?
No. It's lower than that.
Okay. So, even if we drop down, according to this chart, if we drop down to $750,000 for the one year, we're still above their requirement?
Yes. However, if, yeah, if you're gonna do that without getting a loan, then you would be fine. But if you're going to try to go out and get a loan, then you're going to have other obstacles, because you're not going to have the revenue...
Okay.
Versus expenditures, right?
But obviously, if we do get a loan, we won't have that dip.
Correct.
And I believe in our conversation, you also mentioned that if needs be, if we get down to, you know, 18, 19, maybe getting, looking forward into 20, you know, 19, 20, we could, at that point, take the loan.
Correct.
Maybe a smaller amount even.
Correct.
And that would change all of these curves and everything. Okay. I'm not crazy about a 4% increase, and I'm not really thrilled with a nearly $1 million loan.
Can I add something?
You can ask the mayor if you can.
This is not setting the rates. This is not setting rates today. Today, what we're saying is the maximum that can be increased in the future is either two and a half or 4%. That's all we're saying today. We're not saying, we're not saying this is going to be the increase. That's gonna come later.
Okay, good, 'cause we didn't have the rest of the...
We're gonna do that in 45 days.
So, basically, we're just looking at option one, two, or three.
All we wanna know is, can we put on the water, on the water rate that we're gonna send out?
Right.
Can we put 4% or 2.5%?
Gotcha.
Which can, which, are you comfortable with us putting 4, knowing that we might not go to 4, but we have the option to go to 4?
And if, for the sake of argument, we took option three, that's a level 2.5 the whole time?
And today, option one and three would have the same decision today, noticing 2.5%.
Okay.
It's the same. It's just saying that there are different options in the future with regard to your financial plan. But really, the decision today is, do you want to notice that you will have, that increases can be up to 4%? Or notice that increases can be up to 2.5%?
So, whether we get a loan or not, so if we said 2.5, and let's say in year three, we are running short, and as Ron said, we dipped down, and now we're concerned, the fact that we go get a loan shouldn't matter, because we've pegged in the 2.5, right?
Correct.
Would we maybe have to readjust the rates at that point? I mean, take another look at it to see where we're at?
Is there a possibility, because if we limit ourselves to the maximum being 2.5% and we don't go for a loan, and then two years down the road, we want, have a loan, but now our revenues are not in really good balance with our expenses, and we might not look like a good loan candidate, especially after a couple of years and it's going down? So, I mean, I guess I feel like to be, to keep our options open, we should send a notice out that we can use the up to 4%, but I think none of us are eager to go that high. But I think it's better to have the notice give us those options than be stuck with something that might be risky.
I thought that initially, until we had our budget meeting yesterday, and we talked about what some of that money, where some of that money comes from, and some of that is replacing old equipment, and we talked about how we could finance some of that either through lump sum loan or individually through purchasing those, that equipment, and so that kinda changed things for me, because it wasn't like we're just borrowing this money to pay bills, but rather an investment in things that we need over a period of time. So, with that being said, I feel more comfortable with taking a loan, just like you take out a loan for your car, or taking out a loan on things that we know that, you know, if I was an individual, I might take out a five- or a seven-year loan on. My concern is not taking out a loan longer than what we would normally take out a loan for, for that type of, like, say, we're purchasing a vehicle that needs to be replaced, what is the life of that vehicle that we would normally borrow against? So, with that, with that $1 million, what was the repayment length again?
We were looking at 15 years.
15? That's the part I don't like. Yeah. I'm comfortable with a loan, and maybe it's a smaller amount, but I don't, I don't want a 15-year loan, because I think that what we're paying for, we're not gonna get the life necessarily of 15 years out of it. So, maybe it's somewhere between the 2.5 and the 4%, but I'm not comfortable with a full $1 million loan.
And that's a decision that could be made when you came up to that point. And another thing to keep in mind, these reserves are including the capital spending. It's not operating. Operating is very steady. The water utility is in really good financial health. It's just timing your cash and your capital spending. So, that's when you, that's what the loan would come to play, if you end up doing the intense capital projects. I think there's some streets that have repair and replacement projects. If those all happen succinctly in that 19, 1920, 2021 period, then you may want to look at getting a loan to smooth that spike in capital spending. But that's a decision you could make at that time. But on the operating side, the water utility is, is in good financial health, and the operations are consistent.
So, you're saying getting a loan for a portion of this now would suffice for now, and then say, two years from now, getting a loan for, say, the other half a million dollars?
Well, what I'm saying is, when you, when you come to that point in two years, looking at, you know, 'cause, you know, things can change, and looking at your cap, your budget for capital spending for that next year, that's when you would make the decision whether you wanna go out and get the loan or not. But it, I mean, but with 2.5% increases, you'll be keeping up with inflation and funding your operations and having a healthy debt-to-debt ratio, so...
Do you need that full amount now?
No, we don't need it now. The capital improvement projects, we scheduled them out over a five-year period, and in 19, is it 1920?
Yeah.
1920 is when the largest amount of those project funds are going to, are gonna take place.
And they could spread out as well, couldn't they?
Well, they could be spread out a little bit, like, maybe over, over two fiscal years, but you still have to pay for them as they go, and they were fairly large. And I don't, I don't wanna speak out of turn, 'cause I don't remember exactly what the project was, but it was a huge, like, water line replacement, and so, and it was like a $2 million project.
Another thing to consider, if something came up that was unforeseen, and you needed to raise rates greater than 2.5%, greater than 2.5%, you always have the option to re-notice as well. You can always send out another 218 notice in two or three years.
So, we could either send out a notice saying up to 4% or we could send out a notice saying 2.5% with the option that somewhere down the road, we may...
If you needed it.
Send another notice if we needed it.
Yeah, if you needed 4% in three years, you could decide to send out another 218 notice and, and then raise rates.
So, not like last time, where we had steps every couple of years that we could increase the rate of the water. But this time is the maximum amount that we can raise. We can put in the letter, but we do not have to do that. We can go with a rate, let's say, like, 2.5 for a starter, and everything will work, and then when we need it, we can go back and, like we all have done before, and have a hearing here. We don't have to 218 it again, and just have a thing, okay, we're gonna raise it this next year to three, or three and a quarter, whatever it takes, up to a maximum of four. Is that correct?
Correct. If you notice for 4%, you can raise it up to 4%.
But we don't have to do it 4% right off. We can do it in increments of what we feel is correct at that particular time.
Correct. And if this, when we do the public hearing at the end of the notice period, you, the council can choose to adopt a 2.5% increase.
Okay, and this is over a five-year period or a 15-year period?
It's a five-year period.
Thank you.
For 218.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Can you explain for the benefit of our audience, both here in chambers and our TV land, the, the public hearing process, that we're gonna send out notices, go through a 45-day protest period...
Correct.
And then have a public hearing on this.
Correct.
So, can you describe, the notices go out to all of our ratepayers?
Correct.
So, there was a woman here earlier that does not live within the city limits, but is a ratepayer.
Correct.
So, do those ratepayers have the opportunity to weigh in?
Yes, and it'll be explained in the notice, ratepayers have the opportunity to send in a written protest of the, of the increase, and if it's over 51% of the ratepayers, then then it will contest the 218, the rates that are proposed, and will have to propose a different rate.
So, I just wanted to make sure that everybody was clear, that even if you don't live in the city, if you're receiving water services from the city, you do have that opportunity.
Or sewer, or wastewater.
Or wastewater.
Yes.
And it's 51% or 50% plus one?
50% plus one, sorry. Yes.
So, again, option one, that's 2.5% each year or 2.5% total?
Each year. Each year.
Option two?
If we choose.
If we choose, up to two and a half percent each year. Option four, up to four percent each year for the five years.
Correct, correct.
And option, and option one obviously is a loan and up to two-point-five. Option two, four percent, no loan. Option three, two and a half percent, no loan, every year up to, is that it?
And so, and so, and the full, and the full request today is to send out notices for water at whichever option you choose, and then send out the notices for wastewater at the increases, which we showed you in the last meeting, which were seven percent, seven percent, five percent, and then four and a half, four and a half.
Do you have a motion?
Yeah, I'll take a motion.
I will move that we send out the notices with the up to four percent increase as the option that gets published.
Option two, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yes, I don't have...
I second that.
Do I have any further discussion? No, I'm just...
I'm more comfortable with option one, just throwing it out there.
You know, I, I, I guess my natural aversion to four, to four percent is, you know, if you put it there, it could happen. And, but then again, I'm relying on the humanity of the people sitting around me here, who also are subject to these rates. You know, it's not like we're just doing it for you guys and not for us. We're not Congress. And, and, you know, I believe that, that, you know, the feeling is that going to four percent will give us a cushion in case we need it, and things happen. But chances are, we're not gonna go there.
And I don't, can, can I chime in a little bit on what you're talking about? And the purpose with going to four percent is that we would not be borrowing against the future. I think that was the concern, for those of you that weren't here at the prior meetings, was that the concern was, we kind of didn't wanna borrow into the future, and kind of sack the next generation with some loans. And so we wanted to see these options, that's why these came back this way. I, for one, don't wanna raise rates, but I also gotta tell you, again, as Ron said, we're all ratepayers too. I, we had councils in the past that, I'm sure politically, they didn't wanna raise rates either, and so all of a sudden, you get that big, oh, how big of a hike was it, eight or?
It was pretty high.
Yeah, it was pretty high, and all of a sudden, you get used to paying a certain amount, and, and all of a sudden, you get this big rate increase, and it hurts. I, I guess I'd rather warm up to it than, than, than have it just come sting me like a bee, and so...
Just to clarify also, if we, for example, ended up authorizing two and a half percent, and then, and then a couple of years go by, and we don't have any increase, then we can retroactively use those two and a half percents under the two-eighteen, right? So that's what happened when, when they deferred raising the rates for three or four years. Then they had to go back to the maximum that was allowed by accumulating those percent increases that we could have done, but we didn't. So we're, we wanna not load, you know, we don't wanna backload it so that three or four years from now, all of a sudden, it's a big, huge hit.
And the history behind our water system is, it was PG&E's for the longest time, and then it became the city's. And I got the impression from talking to some of the old timers in town that PG&E had pretty much not done a lot of, I think it was PG&E's, and it became just a guy named Horn, Horn owned it, and there was a lot of deferred maintenance, and there was a big push for the city to take it over, because things weren't happening, and the ratepayers weren't getting what they were supposed to be getting. And then when the city took it over, it's an aging infrastructure, and they've been trying to keep up on it, so that you don't have those big jumps, so.
So just to clarify, we're talking about a five-year program, but not necessarily five calendar years. It's actually five increments, correct? So we can, we can, we can raise the rates by a certain percentage, five times, and that five times could take eight years, whatever.
To a certain percent?
Yeah, to a certain percent, yeah.
Okay.
Once the five-year window is passed, you can't increase it.
And doesn't it state annual increase, so that means once per year?
And you can't exceed the rate that is noticed in the year.
So we vote, let's say we take the motion that's on there, option four, and we, sorry, sorry, option two, and it's four percent. We decide, as we set the rates, that that's maybe not where we wanna go. We wanna go two and a half the first year. The second year, as Susie comes and tells us, guess what, all the taxes sprung leaks. There's a lot of capital improvement, and we obviously didn't plan on a loan, so we're gonna raise it to four for that next year.
Yes.
And then the following year after that, we decide either no increase, or a two and a half, or whatever, right?
You could do that.
Up to, but then, and I guess getting with Madge had said, but we get to the end of the five years, if things went haywire, is it that cumulative? I'm using the wrong word. Total comes up, and so could we hypothetically, a council may be, none of us may be here at that point.
None of us may be here for next year.
Yeah. Then they could come in and raise it ten percent in that year, if there was enough of that. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
If, if, I mean, if the math worked out, you hadn't had the increases up to that point, you can raise it up to the noticed rate at that fifth year, which could be a ten percent increase, correct?
Okay, so...
Also, in other words, in five years, you could raise it, you're raising it twenty, up to twenty percent?
If we had no increases, in year five, we come in.
Two and a half the first year, two and a half the second, two and a half. But if you don't use them, they're still there, those potential increases, you can kick them in at a later time.
Double them up.
But our concern again was, we didn't wanna borrow and, and hold the future generation hostage for what we spent. So, so, motion is second, we've had discussion here, would anybody from the public like to speak?
You don't have anything to say about this, do you?
Can I just stop from here?
Oh, you gotta come up here, so, state your name and...
My name is Sherry Abiam, I'm a Willis resident. And I just want to say, really interesting discussion. It still begs the question for the council as to whether or not there's a willingness to dig into the reserve. Because whether a loan is taken with, if the loan is taken, or if the rates are increased four percent, my understanding is, there's no need to dig into the reserve. If it's raised two and a half percent maximum, then there would be a need to dig into the reserve. So that's a separate issue that I'm, I'm understanding is not part, really part of this discussion, as to whether or not to dig into that reserve.
That would be a secondary discussion when we set the rates at that point.
Okay, okay.
Can I respond to that?
Yeah, go ahead.
You know, reserves are funny things, and think of it as your own bank account. The reserves are there for that very purpose. If you have an emergency, if you, if you wanna do something, you know, if you wanna take a vacation, wanna buy a car, if you have a medical bill, you have to pay, you know, that's what it's there for. And if you don't spend it, then it's just a number on a piece of paper. But on the other hand, every one of us has to make that individual decision. What, how, how risk averse are we? How, how much, how much risk do we, do we like to take? Are we comfortable with? And that, that goes with that, of course, is how much are we willing to dip into our reserve fund? And we all have a different level of that. What we're looking at here is public money, it's not our money, it's your money. And we have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that we don't mess with your money, and that we're very careful about this stuff. That's why we don't invest our reserves in junk bonds, or, you know, anything that's gonna theoretically get us a big return, but what can also get us a huge loss. So we're very, very conservative way of handling the money. So when, when we talk about making a plan that will probably include dipping into our reserves, you know, personally, I get a little itchy about that. And, and the same is true with our, with our budget, our general budget that we're wrestling with right now. And, you know, there's always that possibility that something's gonna happen, that I don't wanna go there. But something can happen, and if we, if we allowed our reserves to get below this certain level, and push comes to show up, and something happens, and we can't dip into the, you know, find enough money to deal with it, there's no going back. And, and that worries me, so, you, you, yes, no, I don't wanna go there.
And, Adrian, maybe you can give an example of what would be an appropriate use of reserves if we had to dip, and we dipped into reserves in the past in these, in this account?
So the general rule is only for one-time expenditures, not for operating expenditures?
So we've had, with Main Street, did we have...
Yeah, Main Street was, so, the Main Street water line replacement was one. That was, and the Della Avenue one was considered an emergency, because we had to get in there before the county and... Put in, pardon me?
Paved it.
Paved it, because they were gonna have a five-year no-cut prohibition.
So the emergency, we didn't foresee that it happened, and then we had to dip into it. And then with Main Street, it had to do with, Caltrans wanted to do some work, is that correct?
That's, that's, well...
Our stuff in place before then?
No, the part, the sections that we did are because we had such severe leakage going on. And so we had to replace those lines, they had been patched as, as much as they could be over the years. So we have, I mean, we do have a duty to maintain our infrastructure in, in good order. And we've deferred a lot of things over the years, and so, as I mentioned earlier, we, we've, we're, we feel like we're getting on, on track with taking care of our infrastructure. We don't wanna backslide again.
Does anybody else from the public like to speak on this? You obviously have a chance to come back again if, obviously, after your protest hearing, or through protest, written protest, but you also have an opportunity when, and if we raise rates, and actually raise the actual rates, if you wanted to come in and speak to that, at that point. Because at that point, we would be looking at, sorry. At that point, we would be looking at whether or not we, we would be raising a specific rate to a certain amount or not, so, okay.
I just wanna mention to, for those of you who weren't at the last council meeting, this isn't the first time we've heard about this tonight, just so you know. We had a lengthy presentation at the last meeting, where the council was able to ask a lot of questions. So it seems like there's not a lot of discussion tonight, it's because we were able to ask many questions at the last meeting.
And that's why we requested that these options come back to us, so we could actually see the numbers as far as what options we would take. And again, the purpose was, we didn't wanna borrow, if we could help it, as an option, so. Okay, so, can, you repeat the motion?
We have a motion to authorize the million of California Proposition 218 notice with option two to property owners that propose rate adjustment and setting a public hearing date.
We also need to include something about, just, that's water, but we also need to include something about waste water, right?
Includes both, but we only had options on the water side.
Yeah, so I think we have one motion on this, and we'll have to do another one on...
Oh, do we have to do two separate motions? Okay.
Yeah, so, all right, call for the vote.
Councilmember Rodriguez? No. Stransky?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I have a question. Strong?
Yes.
Hornstein?
Sure.
Stransky?
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez?
Yes. All right, now wastewater. What do we, are you gonna present on that?
It's the same as, it's the same as the last, the last meeting.
Could you recap?
The increases are, that we're proposing are seven percent for the first two years, five percent, and then four and a half percent for the last two years of the five-year period. So seven, seven, five, four and a half, four and a half.
And, Susie, correct me if I'm wrong, but those are more set than the water as far as latitude? We, we have some infrastructure issues that we need to address.
Right.
So it's not like we're going to say we maybe don't have the need, and we can defer it, is that correct?
That's correct.
But we do have that option.
We have the option.
If we decide that we wanna get real crazy and not impose the, the full increase, we can do a lesser increase, correct?
Correct, the, the main issue with wastewater too is getting up to having the right debt ratios to be in compliance with the loan covenants.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So, so, is, so that's important then? I mean, what I just said probably isn't true, that if, if we come up to a year that is pre-programmed for a seven percent increase, we cannot make it a four percent or a five percent increase, because that would mess up the...
You're really, correct, you really need to...
Unless we can lower our costs or...
I was gonna say, unless you come to us and say...
We found some grant money or...
Or Scott says, we, there's no way we can build X, Y, Z, or can install X, because we have to put it off a year, so...
Then we can put off the increase a year.
We would put it off a year, but then, again, that same total, instead of seven percent that one year, it might be eight percent versus six or something.
And I would add, the, the initial increases in wastewater are based, those debt ratios are based off of operating, so deferring capital projects wouldn't affect what those ratios are. It's the ratio of your, your rate revenues to your less expenses and your, to the debt, to your debt, to your current debt service payments.
Larry, it's good.
Now, what does this, does this take into effect also Brooktrails? Because Brooktrails is in with our wastewater plant, or is this, this for the people in Willis? Or is it the percent for everybody?
It's a separate contract.
They have their own rates.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's all of the ratepayers, except for, I believe Brooktrails is under a specific contract.
That's right.
So they, their rates are...
But there is a percentage of, of the rate.
Under the settlement agreement with them?
Yes.
They pay a monthly, a flat monthly rate. And, and they also pay a percentage of three of our loans.
Yeah, but, but Brooktrails has their own rate structure, they charge their own ratepayers. That has nothing to do with what we're talking about tonight. It's not connected at all. Our, our rate structure here has no effect or impact on Brooktrails, and vice versa.
Right, I thought the question was, are we gonna have a seven percent increase to Brooktrails as well? And no, we won't.
Oh, okay.
I will move that we send out the required notice for the wastewater rate, two-eighteen rate, whatever you call it, what Kathy said.
I second it.
I second it.
So motion is second, any further discussion up here? Anybody from the public that would like to speak to our wastewater hearing? None, I guess I bring it back up here. Rule call?
Yes. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Hornstein?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez?
Yes.
And how about Gonzalez? You said Madge.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Last my was...
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, so now we are on Public Matters, item B. Discussion, possible adoption of resolution affirming commitment to nondiscrimination and support for immigrants in our community.
Thank you.
Jim, do you wanna...
Sure, sure.
Before we...
So, Mayor Gonzalez, I mentioned to you before this meeting that I had a concern about paragraph number six of the draft resolution, because I wanted to make sure that you don't get close to saying something that would be in violation of federal law. And eight, United States Code, section thirteen-seventy-three, provides that a local government entity or official may not prohibit or in any way restrict any government entity or official from sending to or receiving from the Immigration and Naturalization Service information regarding the citizenship or immigration status, lawful or unlawful, of any individual. And what, the way I interpret that code section is that it would be unlawful and a violation of this code section, for example, for the city council to restrict its police department from sharing information with the INS about the immigration status of someone. information with the INS about the immigration status of someone. This says you can't do that. And that's important because we have an executive order from our president in January that specifically cites this code section and says that any local jurisdictions that willfully violate this code section will be ineligible for federal funding. So, I just want to make very, I think we should be very careful with our words and the drafting of this resolution, that we provide the assurances to our immigration community that they need and they want. But we do so in a way that does not put the city at risk of having this interpreted as being a willful violation of this code section. The Trump order provides in one place that jurisdictions that willfully refuse to comply with eight USC, section 1373, that is, the sharing of information with the INS about immigration status, are not eligible to receive federal grants. And so, if we then turn to paragraph six of our draft resolution, that language, as it's now written, says, "The Willets Police Department will continue its longstanding practice of not participating or aiding in the enforcement of federal immigration laws, except in certain situations relating to the detention of suspects involved in violent crime or to ensure officer safety." Okay, so, that paragraph says, "We're not going to participate or aid in the enforcement of federal immigration laws." The federal code section I cited from says, "We're not going to pass any law that restricts or prohibits our agencies from sharing information." And so.
And Jim, I had thought by holding over to the next meeting that we could come up with some suitable language that would kind of give the spirit of number six, but not precluded. Because I, I, I think when I spoke with somebody out there, I wanted to make sure that you couldn't, we currently have police department policy that's been vetted by other attorneys and complies with state and federal law. And I didn't want to put us in a position of violating state or federal law. Because I got to tell you, as, if I were the police chief, I would say, "You don't have the authority, city council, to do that." And I didn't want to put our police department in that position, as opposed to, so I guess I look to you at the moment, if you have some suggestions.
Well, I'd, I'd be happy with, if we, if we took out paragraph six in its entirety, does the, does the document still provide the assurances and, and does it still meet the purpose for the resolution if that paragraph is not even in there?
When, if you go ahead and do the research on paragraph six, I think what you need to also look at are the recent court rulings. Is my understanding that, first of all, several federal courts, I don't know the right designation for them, have declared that the executive order was unconstitutional and illegal.
At a trial court level, the First District Court in San Francisco has issued an injunction that prohibits the enforcement of this executive order. And my understanding is that the Trump administration is going to appeal that.
Okay, so that's still in the open. But my, I also believe that at least two or three other courts around the country have issued the same, you know, edict. But on top of that, I seem to recall either another court decision, I don't think it came to the Supreme Court, but I think that another court decision that said that essentially it was illegal for the federal government to withhold funds from any local jurisdiction if they did not work with, you know, if they didn't conform to this executive order.
Well, that's what I understand that the San Francisco District Court's ruling was, that Trump administration, you may not put new strings and conditions on the federal funds.
So, all I'm saying is, if you take a look at number six, I think you'll need to study those issues. And that'll clarify our options a little bit better, because it could very well be that we're not at any kind of risk.
I, I guess my concern had to do with, we changed the words so that we captured the spirit of what we want to get without putting us in a position, I'll tell you what, we're Willets, and I got to tell you, we don't have a lot of money. And yes, in the end, Trump may lose. And, but if we had to litigate or have federal funds withheld, then we use currently, if Adrian can give me an idea of some of the federal funding we currently get.
FAA.
What's that?
FAA.
FAA.
We have grants for airport.
And we did have grants to the police department and.
For transportation projects.
Yeah. So, if that money got tied up, I mean, we may be able to say, boy, we were, held our convictions, but in the meantime, we won't be able to pay our bills. That's my big concern.
What we heard at the town hall meeting, from you and Sheriff Almond.
What's that? Hold on a second.
She needs to go up to the podium.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, we haven't, I thought we were going to have like a little council discussion and then open it up for the public hearing.
Oh, I apologize.
It's up to you.
No, no, you're right. Thank you for catching me. So, so I guess that's my, those are my concerns, at least with number six. So, maybe at this point, I'll open your page.
Yeah. I personally don't feel as though the wording of number six conflicts with that. We're not talking about information, we're talking about aiding in the enforcement of immigration laws. And we don't want, we aren't required to aid in the enforcement of, and I don't want us to. So, I don't, maybe that some wordsmithing would help make it really clear in case somebody challenges us. So, I'm not averse to looking at the wording. But, but I don't think there's much, I have trouble or concern with number six. So, yeah.
So, I just want to highlight some things that although we're not supporting SB 54, I want to highlight some important factors that are listed in it. And it's a 7284.2. The legislature finds and declared the following thing, that immigrants are valuable and essential members of the California community. Almost one in three Californians is born, and one in two children in California has at least one immigrant parent. A relationship of trust between California's immigrant community and the state and local agencies is central to public safety of the people of California, which is why I believe this resolution is important. This trust is threatened when state and local agencies are entangled with federal immigrant immigration enforcement with the result that immigrant community members fear approaching police when they are victims of and witness to crimes seeking basic health services or attending school to the detriment of public safety and the malfeasance of Californians. We had asked that, that, I know that the community group and myself have asked people that would be willing to come and share their story this afternoon. And I know that some didn't feel comfortable coming and speaking for fear of ICE. I know there are some that believe that it's, it couldn't happen in our community, but the truth is, it can happen. And so, I'd like to read a statement. And these are the words of the person that I spoke with. So, I'm going to be reading her words. She says, "Even if I feel like I try my best, I notice that my kids are still affected. I have to let them know that I'm scared too. I try to be positive. They get scared and try to be strong for me too. They are so scared that they aren't always aware of how it is affecting them. I tell them it's okay to be scared. My body recognizes that I'm scared too. I have to think about what I can do about this situation. I have to be prepared in some way. My husband and I were thinking, we should write something in case they come and take us, or our children have no parents. Our children need to know they can be safe. Our plan says which friends they can call to figure out where they can stay. I think my children can stay here, but families belong together. My children need their parents. We're the ones to teach them the good values of life. I came here as a teenager with my parents. We had a hard time to get here. My father died a few months after we arrived. I think he knew we had to be here and hoped we would have a better life. My husband came here over 20 years ago on a visa. His family submitted an application for residency, but the process is taking so long. They could take him too. We want an opportunity to become legal. There is no opportunities. Our friends with citizenship tell us, we can live on their property. Lots of people have said kind words and offer support. I'm so thankful for their kindness. That's what gives me hope. And that's why I feel it's so important that the city council take action on a resolution, because as leaders, it's symbolic that we let the people in this community know that they're valued and that we're here, we're here to protect them, and we care. And there is a plan in place. And there are, look at these people that are here today. Like, we had a town hall meeting, and I heard that that was one of the largest number of people that attended the town hall meeting. But yet, it was so hard to get this item on the agenda. And I don't understand that, because this is a, this is a topic that's impacting our community. And I get that my skin is not dark, that I don't appear to be an immigrant. So, why would this be an issue for me? But this isn't, this isn't about where you're from, this isn't about the color of your skin, this is about doing what you believe is, is right, and standing up for others and, and being a true leader. So, that's why I would like to see this resolution passed. The wording for number six has to come back and be refined next time. So be it. But it needs to be placed on the agenda and seriously addressed. And I would love to see it unanimous, so that the people in our community know that leaders in this community, whether they're sitting at this table, they're in the audience, or they're out there, that we all care, and that we're going to come together as a community.
Thank you.
I'm waiting for whatever they're going to say.
Did you want to say something?
Yeah. I am the child of immigrants. They immigrated 100 years ago, and I was born in America. But I think most of us here are immigrants, unless we're Native Americans. A little more recently than when my parents came here, some of my distant relatives and people that I identify with tried to immigrate into the United States to escape Nazi Germany. And they were turned away. So, it's not, you know, it's a whole lot similar to what's happening now. I mean, I mean, it's hard for me to always relate to what's going on now, because I get comfortable in my, in my Anglo skin and, and, you know, natural born American. But it's, it's there, it's there. And there is a rightness to how we treat people. And we should never forget, I think one of the benefits of having the current administration in Washington, and there is a benefit, because I believe that we are all becoming acutely aware of how bad things can be if we're, if we're not vigilant, if we don't say on top of things. And, you know, I'm not, I'm not a protester, I'm not a demonstrator, I don't go on marches, I don't wear pink hats or things like that, even though inside I, I'm with you. I, I, I like some of the comments that Suprina made, you know, referring to, you know, leadership and stepping up and, and, you know, taking responsibility for doing what's right. And doing what's right is a trite expression, you know, that used to be in my generation, when I was a kid, that's, that's what you did. You know, you, the cop on the beat was your best friend, and you saluted the flag, and you said the pledge to allegiance. And, you know, you, you were a true person. And I know I sound like an old man when I say this, but, you know, it seems like a lot of those old values are not with us as much as they used to be. And I'm sorry to see that. I, I said before, and I think it's been referred to up here just even more recently, that we, the city, the city council does have a fiduciary responsibility to the public. And part of that responsibility is to make sure that we don't do things that are going to endanger the receipt of certain grants to do work that has to be done in the name of the public. So, there's that on that side. I would not like to do something that's going to put us in the crosshairs of the federal government and make us suffer in some way. On the other hand, I like to think that I'm a man, in the true sense of the word. And even women are men in that regard, you know what I'm saying?
Even men are women in that regard.
Yeah, very cool. We're people, you know? You know, and sometimes, you know, I think it's important sometimes to say, you know, okay, I'm willing to take that possible hit that is possible. And it's not said that we could lose this federal money, but it's possible. So, what do we do? Do we, and I'm saying this to you guys, because, again, this is your money that we're, we're dealing with. So, would you be okay if we were to take action that stood for principles and on the other, and while we're doing that, we were putting in jeopardy certain projects that would benefit you ultimately? You know, it's a hard decision, you know, for, for me, and I'm sure for my colleagues here, that we have to stand up and be counted. And I'm not afraid to be counted, but I don't want you to get hurt because I'm making a stand. So, I get philosophical in my old days, so forgive me.
You know what, at this point, if nobody else wants, I do have some comments I want to make at the end, but I'd like to make them after everybody from the public speaks. So, at this point, I'll open it up to the public. Please step up, state your name.
My name is Liam O'Carroll. And my ancestors immigrated here in the next ship after the Mayflower, as well as during the Irish Potato Kingdom. And they're just as much immigrants as any coming in today. But I have a question for the city attorney. In the paragraph that you questioned, it stated that we would continue the existing policy. What is the existing policy that we would be continuing? And would that, as currently stated, violate the issue that you have mentioned?
You know, I don't know how that paragraph was written to reflect the existing policy, because Mayor Gonzalez read to me texts from the actual police department, written policy that basically recites the United States Code section that I said. So, the current written policy of the police department is to comply with or not violate the federal law of, that prohibits restricting the flow of information between the city and the INS.
So, it was an inaccurate statement to begin with?
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't, it was not a quote from the actual written policy. Perhaps that is an informal policy as opposed to a written policy.
And, and what I had talked to some of the group is, I wanted to compare this with our policy. And I think we'd had a conversation about a possible proclamation that would borrow from this. But then it went back to this. And to be honest with you, I was under the impression some of that had been vetted. And talking to the city attorney, those same concerns I had came back. And so, I felt some quick wordsmithing, if it didn't happen today, it probably would have come back at the next meeting, so that we would be in compliance. Our current policy at the police department, I updated all our policies with an attorney group that, it's kind of the same policy a lot of the agencies use in the county. And it reaffirms a lot. In fact, I showed that policy to Councilman Rodriguez at the town hall. I believe I shared that, and also state law that's currently in place. And so, I wanted to capture the essence of what we want to do without currently forcing our police department to violate policy. And while it may not necessarily be worded to that extent here, I at least wanted to address what the city attorney said, so that, and I guess that's what I wanted to do.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Dinah Hutton. I've had the pleasure of working with many of Willets adult immigrants for the last 25 years. The immigrants almost always were upbeat, happy, content, worked hard, shared their rich stories, and were active in the Willets community. Now, they're afraid. In fact, many people who are not even immigrants. In fact, many people who are not even immigrants, who are naturalized citizens, are afraid. I know naturalized citizens who keep copies of their US passports on their persons all the time. I know Asians born in the USA who are afraid. I am afraid because of the changes I see. Recently, I was with some of my immigrant friends who read this resolution out loud together and were moved to tears. This resolution made them feel that someone cared. I ask you to pass this compassionate resolution to help people feel less alone, less afraid. Let's resolve to live in mutual respect and support. Thank you for your time.
Over the past 40 years I've lived here, I've watched Willets benefit from the contributions of an often colorful and increasingly diverse population. Yet for all that, many of us would characterize ourselves as pretty independent folks. It doesn't take very long to realize how interdependent we humans are, how our desires and needs are more similar than different. We want to be able to live peacefully without fear for ourselves or our family. We want to be respected in our interactions with others, to find meaningful work, to fulfill our potential and participate freely in community life as we choose. It's always seemed to me one of the benefits of small-town living is that sense of community and of accountability that comes with encountering each other in multiple roles. Your coworker may also be the soccer coach for your child's team. Your neighbor may belong to a service club sponsoring a fundraiser for your favorite nonprofit. But that said, there can also be parts of our community we're less familiar with, those who are not within our circle of friends, our church, our workplace, those who have different political beliefs, sexual preferences and ethnic origins. There's much uncertainty in our country now, much rhetoric threatening change, however unclear the details. New policy directives threaten deportation for as many as eight million immigrants. While most of us are not big fans of change or uncertainty, immigrants now face some of the most serious challenges to peace of mind. A pervasive climate of fear has been created with no resolution in sight. While we cannot directly or quickly change all of that, we can as a community declare the guidelines by which we will operate. The resolution before the city council tonight does not create sanctuary city status. It does not jeopardize funding. I speak in support of it because it affirms a commitment to all community members. It welcomes those who have chosen to live here and it recognizes a thriving civic life is built on a foundation of respect and compassion and free of discrimination. And the only thing I wanted to add to that issue about number six is that at the town hall meeting, we heard you, Mayor Gonzalez and Sheriff Almond very clearly state that it is not the job of either of your agencies to enforce federal law. And I think the intent of number six is about that. And I think that there's a way to say that that's very clear, but doesn't necessarily jeopardize funding and so I hope there's a way to leave the essence of that in there and still feel like we are not putting a target on ourselves, which I don't think is the case. Thank you.
Um, there's three points that I'd like to make tonight and the first one speaks to Mr. Lantz's concern about loss of federal funding if this, or if this resolution would be interpreted as being in defiance of federal law. And that is, just on Monday, Attorney General Jeff Sessions issued a new order that's saying that at most sanctuary jurisdictions will lose grants from the Justice Department and the Homeland Security Department only, not all federal funds. So FAA funds, other grants you may receive from the funds, from the feds are not under jeopardy under Jeff Sessions' own order. Secondly, Sessions' memo says that it means that only places that willfully refuse to comply with the 1996 order ordering, uh, local governments to share information about someone's immigration status would be subject. If you're not collecting the information in the first place, and I believe that is the Willetts city policy, you can't be found guilty of willfully refusing to share it. So, to me, that's a no-brainer. Um, okay, second point, we are all safer when any and all residents of the community feel safe to talk to the police. A friend of mine in Guatemala named Carlos had been living and working up here in the States in Florida about 10 years ago. His house was broken into in the middle of the night by a knife-wielding attacker who turned out to be a US-native-born non-Latino, by the way. Carlos managed with the help of a baseball bat to disarm and subdue the man while his wife frantically called for help. When the police came though, they started asking Carlos about where he was from, how long he'd lived here, what papers did he have. Suddenly understanding his own vulnerability, he and his wife moved to Tennessee two days later. The very first night in Tennessee, his car was broken into, tools were stolen, wheels were stripped off of it. Needless to say, Carlos did not report the second crime to the police. And needless to say, the knife-wielding intruder went free when there was no witness to testify against him. The city of Willets has had a laudable but quiet policy of not acting like law enforcement does in those other states, but our immigrant population is not really aware of that. The problem is that the approach has been too quiet. Those who don't speak English, who feel vilified by the current president, just keep their heads down and try to be invisible. That's why you don't see them here tonight, because they're afraid to be on TV, they're afraid to give you their names, but they're here in our community, they probably provide all of us with a lot of services. Our immigrant community, especially the first-generation immigrants, are statistically less likely to commit crimes than all of the rest of us. They are more likely to be the victims of crimes. I didn't even know about this city policy until a few months ago. It's too quiet. What more?
I think your time is up.
Okay. Um, thank you. It's a great policy, but it needs to be stated clearly to be effective, it needs to reach the people that are vulnerable. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sheri Evyam and I'm still a Willets resident. This is a powerful time for all people, especially young people, to hear the message, messages in our resolution. According to the California Department of Ed Data Quest website, nearly one-third of all students in the Willetts School District identify as Hispanic Latino, Asian, Pacific Islander, or of Filipino ethnicity. Just as the actions of our federal government mark each of us, this is an opportunity to send our own message, to make a dent in the destructive activity we see happening. This is an opportunity on a local level to express to ourselves and to each other, to model for the young people in our community what kind of community we value. This resolution is not about the politics of immigration, of how long it takes to become a citizen or to get a green card. It is about how we want to treat each other. The immigrant community needs to know they will be treated with decency and can live with less fear in Willets. This resolution, if passed, can mark the psyche of each of us, that we are vigilant in our determination, that we as individuals and as a community affirm our commitment to nondiscrimination and support for immigrants in our community, and they need to know this too.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Gonzalez and members of the city council. Appreciate you opening up this public portion of this item before you. My name is Mark Comer and, uh, just a couple of things. First of all, I'm going to read from the Fort Bragg, uh, resolution that was passed a couple of months ago. I got this from Lyndy Peters. "The Fort Bragg Police Department has a longstanding practice of not participating or aiding in the enforcement of federal immigration laws, except in certain situations related to the detention of suspects involved in violent crime." That's what we got. Santa Rosa City Council passed a resolution that says in part, "The city employees, including members of the Santa Rosa Police Department, shall not enforce federal civil immigration laws and shall not use city monies, resources, or personnel to investigate, question, detect, detain, or apprehend persons solely on the basis of possible violation of immigration laws." We're going to be in great company. In fact, we could share legal expenses. So, a couple of points I'd like to make tonight. Um, this resolution is not going to cost the city council any money. That's important. Immigrants are willing to come here and speak for themselves, so we need to speak for them. One thing, and you brought this up, Councilman Ornstein, is the lesson of the Holocaust. And that, and one lesson is, is that evil takes place, evil will triumph, when good people refuse to act. That's pretty heavy and it's a heavy burden on you all. And I hope you remember that when you raise your hands and vote tonight, I hope you vote tonight, and not postpone this because next time you're probably going to be inundated with marijuana issues and it's going to be a circus in here. So, tonight's a good night. I also want to point out there were about 25 other people that were waiting to speak tonight to come in here and left because they didn't think this was going to happen. So this room would be way overflowing if all of us stuck around, so you're lucky. Last thing is, is that we're just restating police policy in this, in this proclamation. Thank you.
I'm Cynthia Reiser-Jevons. I'm a 23-year resident of the Willets community and I am a child of immigrants. My father came to this country at the age of 17 alone and went through Ellis Island so that he could, um, receive an education and provide a better future for himself and later for his family. So, I wanted to have a brief opportunity to speak in support of the adoption of the resolution affirming the commitment to nondiscrimination and support for immigrants in our community and strong support for that. And, um, and Mark kindly partially said, but I wanted to say too in that I wanted to acknowledge the very many people who came here tonight in order to participate and listen and, um, speak to this resolution. And, um, because of the very unfortunate confusion at the beginning of the meeting, they did not stay. Um, I'm sad that they were not able to because I think the discussion that has ensued has been very worthwhile and, um, I am grateful for that. And I wanted to stand here in, um, in acknowledgement of all the people who would be here tonight had that confusion not ensued because, um, we were ready with a full chambers and so we need to acknowledge that publicly. Thank you so much.
Um, I'm, my name is Robin Goldner and I'm a therapist in Willets. And I've been thinking a lot about terror recently, especially after the attack this week in the U.S. And as a therapist, I work with people who experience terror, mostly due to past incidents. And I, it often impairs their ability to think clearly and act effectively. And terror is defined as an intense overpowering fear and also the ability to instill intense fear. And I know that when the deportation of immigrants because, became a prominent national issue several months ago, it instilled widespread fear in our immigrant community in Willets and nationwide. To me, this resolution before you that affirms Willets' commitment to nondiscrimination and support of immigrants is an anti-terror measure. One of terror's most powerful characteristics is the unpredictability of its strikes. If passed, this revolution gives some measure of predictability to all Willetts citizens. It acknowledges all of us as honored community members and assures all will be treated with dignity, fairness, and respect. I urge you to pass the resolution. Thank you.
I'm also a therapist and, um, and in that capacity, I've had a, an opportunity, more than one actually, to, um, sit with, uh, clients who are from other countries and, um, they have their people, or were people, there's all kinds of people walking into my office and they're sad, they're scared, they're depressed, they have all kinds of issues. In this particular case, I wanted to share with you, uh, a real person, because I don't know if everybody in this room knows, actually somebody who's from another country who's scared. This is a woman who is employed, she has several children who are adorable and delightful and smart, of course, and her husband is undocumented. She has a little kid at Brookside Elementary who says, "Mommy, is Mr. President Dum Dum Trump going to take away our dad?" He actually says this. This isn't like fun or cartoons or play-acting, that's, actually, he's scared that he'll wake up in the morning and his dad won't be there. So, I was asked to write a letter to his attorney and the attorney, I thought, I didn't know what the attorney would want me to say, so I had a very long conversation with this attorney in San Francisco who was working pro bono for this family. He says, "Say that your client, the wife, is scared and anxious and her life will be pretty awful if he gets sent back." Not just the money, but what it will do to the kids, the disruption. So that's, I was able to say that. I want you to know, these, these are people that I know who live somewhere nearby and this is what they sit down with every day for their dinner and they wake up every morning for their breakfast and that's it. And just to add one more in a bigger sense, there's something that a lot... And just to add one more, in a bigger sense, there's something that a lot of us in this room are sure know. It's called the Trump Effect. And the Trump Effect is, I'm sure we can all talk about that, but the Trump Effect, the way it's being seen in schools, is an increase in hate speech and violence on the playground, more permission for children to be mean to each other. We don't want that. So, please pass it, so we get to be proud of ourselves. My terror is that we wouldn't pass it. I have a terror that we would kowtow to this inappropriate leader that we have somehow elected. That's my terror. Thank you.
Hi, good night. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Isabel Quiroz, and I am an immigrant. I started my immigration process before the Trump Effect, and I just happened to be immigrating in a very challenging time. My immigration process has been very long, it's been very challenging, it's been expensive, and I am one of the lucky ones, because everything I've done, I just, I immigrated here because I wanted to, not because I have to. I, I speak English. As a matter of fact, I speak more than two languages. I have education. I am a privileged person, so I can only imagine how it feels for people that are not in my position, because I am feeling a lot of what the previous person described. I'm very nervous, and it feels horrible. I want to be part of this community. I want to be active in this community. And to be honest, there are times in which, since all this started, I do not feel comfortable to go and participate in different activities, because I'm fearful that I'm going to be pointed or yelled at, which has happened before in the streets, unfortunately. So, I think this is a great historic opportunity for everyone to do something that can really give a positive message and to unite this community. Thank you.
Hello? How's everybody doing? I'm, in case you can't tell, I'm the Chief of Police. I'm Scott. I have been a police officer for almost 40 years, and I have, during that time, never asked anybody their immigration status. I am not special. I don't know any police officer who ever has. I'm sure, I'm sure it has happened. But I've worked at five different police agencies, and we've never done that.
It's a different time.
We're, well, we're not interested in anybody's status. We're interested in helping people. So, first of all, in order, if we wanted to, which we don't, if we wanted to enforce any kind of federal law, we would, we would have to be deputized, because we're executive officers of the state of California, which means we enforce laws of the state of California and whatever local jurisdiction that we work in. So, we don't have jurisdiction to enforce federal laws. There are some federal laws we have to abide by. For example, if we, if we arrest someone, and we take them into custody, we're going to take them to jail, there's a federal law that requires us to ask them if they're a citizen of another country. We don't ask them if they're here legally or illegally. We have to ask them if they're a citizen of another country, so that we can provide them with the information to contact their consulate, because they have a right to do that. Some, some countries, some of them are in the South Pacific, but some of the countries require us to contact the consulate. So, that's the only reason, the only time we ever ask anybody about their citizenship. We don't want people to be afraid to come to the police. We don't want to create a class of citizens, or, when I say citizen, I mean public. We don't want to create, create a class of people who are afraid to come to the police, because that creates a class of people who are easy to prey on. So, we don't do that. And again, I'm not speaking to the resolution, I'm not speaking to anything else other than what the Willet's Police Department and most other, at least in California, most other police departments practice, so.
Hi, Anne Van De Work here again. I think about the kinds of things that happened in Germany during the Second War, I mean, the World War II, to people. And the federal laws in Germany were what were dictating what was happening. And, you know, funds could be withheld, and people could be arrested, and it's like, what line do we draw? I mean, we have to act like, we have to stand up and say, we're never, ever going to be like this, whether we cut off some federal funds or not. I mean, think about who, who makes these kinds of things happen. I don't think we want it to get worse, but if we act like we can't, because we might lose something, then we're going to get there.
Hi, I'm Alex Harder, and I still live in Willets, too. And...
You've got that.
Yeah, thanks. So, I wanted to bring up, not what we should do, but what we can do. And I realized, having come from L.A. and looked at this issue a lot, that the most common category we have of people that we're talking about is refugees, even though they're only a plurality of immigrants that actually make it here. And those are the people who we really can be liberal in every sense in how we treat them, and partially because they don't have any other choice themselves. But then we have the economic migrants, who usually make up the majority, anyways have probably as well, going back to before the Native Americans became Native Americans. They're the ones who, of course, you know, we have to, as a policy, be progressive. They can come and go, a policy can come and go. It can be case by case, unchangeable. They don't have to be here. It's up to them. And I guess the third number that's obvious, when you talk or hear anything in the news, is the 10% that are, you know, in the roughly world average criminals, of whom you've got 0.1%, you know, who are considered terrorists and all of that. And the problem I have with all of those designations are, these are the people who will never have a choice to be inputting into policies. It'll take them generations. I mean, this is talking like, how many, you know, people use the phrase, seven generations when they get into the far left often, and Native Americans. But the problem is, these people take three generations just to learn enough English sometimes. So, you know, speaking for immigrants, I'm just glad that we got, we got to be here.
Anybody else?
I'm Don Willis. Just going to talk about a member of my family who's an immigrant. She's from Ethiopia. She lost an arm in the war with Eritrea. Sorry.
Is it on?
Okay. Doesn't matter. Okay. My, my nephew is married to a woman from Ethiopia. She lost her arm in the war with Eritrea when she was 13. She came here to the United States to get a prosthesis for her arm, and she ended up falling in love with my sister's son and marrying him. Now, they live in Seattle, have three wonderful children, the oldest boy of whom is, gotten a scholarship to the top private school in Seattle. And they're really a success story, she's a success story, against all odds. And it wouldn't, she had to be welcomed. It was, there were sister cities involved, there was a sister city with Boulder and the town she was from. She had help along the way from communities like ours. And I'm, I'm proud of all the communities that, that made it happen, and, and I think we're on the right track. I think we're, we're doing the right thing in wanting to support people who are coming here for whatever reason, because they want a better life.
Hi, my name's Pam Brown. I'm also a therapist in Willets. And Ron, I wanted to thank you for your comment. As one person, I am willing to take that risk, although it may not even be incurred. I urge you guys to pass this resolution. Goodness, back around 2003, I had the privilege of meeting a woman who, when I had lived here in this town for, you know, three and a half years, she had lived here since she was about one, she was 35 years old. Her immigration papers had gotten messed up in some kind of way that I don't fully understand, but she was a mom, a wife, hardworking family, raising kids. And I thought, my God, this person could be sent back. Thankfully, she was not. So, that's why I would urge you guys to pass this revolution, because, you know, a fine person who'd been such a part of this community for many, many years, while I had barely been here at all. So, I hope we pass this. Thank you.
Anybody else? Otherwise, I have some thoughts, but I don't want to keep anybody from speaking if they want to speak. Okay, I guess I'll bring it back up here. I, I guess I look at paragraph six, and I'm going to offer a different wording and see if I have support up here. Instead of what it reads now, it would be, "The Willet's Police Department will continue its longstanding practice and commitment to providing police services regardless of immigrant status." And I think I'm trying to capture the essence. And I'll be honest with you, I had met with some of you already, and I, I'm for this. But I got to tell you, in thinking, I was thinking what other grants we have, and there are some Department of Justice grants we have with the police department that we currently have. So, after sitting through, and if you've been here yesterday for our budget meeting, looking for funding wherever I can get it. At the same time, I did have a chance to meet with the National Cancer Group, I did meet with some other folks, and message received, that the folks are concerned that they're not just Hispanic illegal immigrants, as, which was my concern, that I knew that, in talking to other folks in the community, that there are a lot of folks that are here legally that are a little concerned. And so, putting something out is important. And I do agree with Suprina on that. I told her I agreed with that. I did hope to have a little extra time to do this. I apologize, I should have caught this and probably ran it through with our city attorney sooner. Let me tell you my story. I grew up speaking Spanish. I was born here in Willets. My parents are both from Mexico. My father first came to this country as an undocumented illegal alien. And he later on was sponsored by his work and basically provided an avenue for, for citizen, or for resident alien status. And ultimately, he became a citizen after my mom passed away, but he was very proud of that. Growing up, he really pushed on us, education. He actually wanted us to register to vote. He felt that that was one method to be, I guess, a positive influence in the community. So, we, as soon as we hit 18, we registered to vote. And I kind of told everybody, some of the folks I've spoken to, is, get everybody to register to vote. If you don't like what's happening in Washington, I think we need to speak with, at the ballot, and make those changes there. But I also understand that in light of how people feel locally, that putting something out is important. But I kind of wanted you to understand that I wasn't trying to kick this to the next meeting because I didn't believe in it, but because I want also safeguard. I, I got to tell you something, this is not my money. This was my money and my thing. I, I got to tell you, I could go to Vegas and roll the dice, but this is the people's money that we're dealing with, and I do feel a strong commitment, and I don't want to have a cavalier attitude towards the people's money. I want to do what we can to keep the city afloat. So, fiscal responsibility has to be something at the forefront, because I can't provide those police services where they're not going to ask you your immigrant status if we don't have any money coming in. So, I look at that. But I also wanted you to know what my story was, because I did have to learn English. I did have, you know, I got to tell you, I did have times in my life where I did suffer discrimination, but at the same time, my father told me, you know, that's going to be out there, you need to learn to deal with it and move on, and I would hope my father would be proud to have me sitting up here now. And throughout my career as a police officer, I did my best to follow the law, to follow it fairly and apply it fairly. And so, any of you that ever had any contact with me, hopefully you, you got the gist of that, and when you see me around town, you know how I roll. So, that's my commitment, not only to the community, but to everybody. I didn't see a color, because frankly, I didn't like that when people saw a color. I, I just saw a person that needed help. And I always instilled that in my officers when I was chief, and that's what I saw out there. So, that's the change I would like to have, and then I would, I guess, can I make a motion to?
You can.
Yeah, we're down for you.
Basically, the resolution as it stands, except that number six would read, "The Willet's Police Department will continue its longstanding practice and commitment to providing police services regardless of immigrant status."
That's your proposal?
That's my proposal.
What was it before? That's what I...
Oh. "The Willet's Police Department will continue its longstanding practice of not participating or aiding in the enforcement of federal immigration laws, except in certain situations related to detention of suspects involved in violent crime or to ensure officer safety." And I don't have the second page. Do you?
Yes.
Okay. So, and I think that was, I ran it by the city attorney.
Yeah, I wouldn't have any problem with that change.
I have been in this community for a really long time, and I taught school here for 35 years. And until all of this started coming up, I had no idea whether a student that came through my classroom was legal, illegal. It never happened. I mean, it just didn't happen in the classroom. And maybe I was naive, obviously I was naive about it. I, I have no idea about my ancestry. I'm adopted, I'm almost 80 years old, and at that particular time, you have no idea what your ancestry is, because nobody gives it to you. I'm going to go against all of you, and I'm going to oppose this, because I, for many, many reasons, I'm going to be the same person tomorrow when I get up and come to work, or meet any of you at the store, or whatever, as that I am today. I, my, my, my mind has not changed about anybody, and I have no prejudice against anybody. And if you can talk to any student in school that I had in school, there was never any prejudice against, from me to them. I just think that this is the wrong place to do this. I think that, and I see the faces going up out there, this is your choice, and this is my choice, and I'm enough of a person to stand up and tell you how I'm going to vote. And it will pass, obviously, because I'm going to be the only negative person there, but I also have a right to, same as you people do, to have my opinion. And that's what I want you to remember. I'm not, I'm not against anybody, and I'm not, but I am against the resolution, okay? And I've had people that have, and I've said this before, and I'll see, can I have it on? I have, I'm the only councilman on the city council of the city of Willets that has office hours. There isn't anybody else on this council, other than maybe the young lady at the end of the, of the...
Suprina.
Suprina, excuse me. And, but my hours are posted, and people have come in to giving both sides of the story. And you people aren't the only people in town that have an opinion on this. I just thought I would tell you that also. There's been pros and there's been cons that have come to me. And this is not the reason that I'm voting against it. I'm voting against it because I just think... it. I'm voting against it because I just think that this is wrong. And leave it at, leave it. I've given you all my solutions to it, and that's the way it is. If you don't like what I said, then just take it for granted, and you don't have to talk to me or anything else. I'm just telling you that that's what I'm going to do and how I'm going to vote. Okay? And I'm mad enough to stand up here and tell you in front of all of you people that I'm going to vote against it. Okay? Thank you.
So I made a motion. Do I have a second on my motion?
Did you guys have some votes?
Yep.
No, we can't present it because there's a motion on the table.
Well, it's not been seconded. You can, you can present an alternate.
We can't until the motion has either failed or seconded for further discussion.
No, you, no, this, you, you are.
You can do it again.
It hasn't been seconded yet.
You are permitted.
So I just want to know, do I have a second on my motion?
I'm not seconding the motion.
I'd like to hear what they have to say.
Okay, so my motion dies for lack of a second.
I'll make a motion that we strike on number six. The words "will continue its longstanding practice" and replace that to be worded as "Willets Police Department will not participate or aid in the enforcement of federal immigration laws, except in certain situations related to the detention of suspects involved in violent crime or to ensure officer safety." So all I'm doing is striking the words "will continue its longstanding practice" and taking out, changing, participating to participate and aiding to aid. That's my motion.
I'll second the motion.
And I don't make that, I don't make that motion cavalierly.
So you second?
I will second the motion.
Further discussion on this one?
Yeah.
You made your motion. Do you want it to?
Oh, yeah, I seconded the motion. I think it is much stronger than an appropriate policy decision of a city council to instruct our police department. I mean, I think they're already doing it. They aren't, they are not participating and aiding in the enforcement of ICE. And I want that to be the city policy. So I think it's an appropriate thing. And if it runs a slight risk, which I don't think is significant, and if it does, we're in good company, as Leon pointed out. And, and it's appropriate to take that stand.
All right, I just wanted to clarify what, which, we have two wordings, and not necessarily, okay, I guess we have motions, but.
We have a new motion, by the way.
And I didn't mean to, you know, I was, I would be willing to second it, but I think the wording is important. So that's why we should have held off when making motions until we got the wording. So, so, so Jerry, you're saying the Willets Police Department will continue its longstanding practice and commit to providing service regardless of immigration status, immigrant status, or something?
Yeah, the Willets Police Department will continue its longstanding practice and commitment to providing police services regardless of immigrant status.
And, and, and what about the part in certain situations, detention involved, you know, violent crime, officer safety? Do you think that would be important to keep in there?
Well, I guess, in talking to Jim, and this is why I kind of want a little more time to wordsmith this, but that there was a section of our current policy that prohibits enacting, basically, I think it goes back to what happened in San Francisco, where the sheriff violated their own policy and told them, "You shall not contact ICE ever, ever, never." And apparently, it's in state law that you can't do that, currently. And so our current policy codifies that. And so I turned over the, the section that, and that was put in there for that reason. I, I said, I updated our policies right before I retired, so that's why I'm familiar with this. And because years ago, there was an issue with, ICE had come up and wanted us to participate in some sweeps. And I said, no, we will only participate in so far as these folks are breaking laws, et cetera, because we had a, at that point, and I think I spoke to some of you folks here, that our insurance provider, Remif, had cautioned us on it. And it had to do with that whole civil versus criminal, and, and do you know which one is which, when you're contacting these people? And obviously, just looking at somebody, you wouldn't know whether they're violating the civil law or the criminal law, et cetera. So.
All right, well, I'm going to suggest this, even though there is this.
Can I make a quick comment?
Sure.
You just told us a story about how you handled this situation. But from what I heard, you stated exactly what I asked for, and you said, and this is what it states here, "Willets Police Department will not participate or aid," which you stated you did not, "in the enforcement of federal immigration laws."
Except in certain.
And then we said, and it goes on to say, "except in certain situations related to the detention of suspects involved in violent crime or to ensure officer safety."
And again, our current policy refers to the sharing of information. Again, I, it was Jim's concern that we...
But didn't you just tell me that on the advice of?
Remif, that was a couple of years ago. This was before the current policy. So at that point, it wasn't codified in the policy as much as it was advice. So.
I'm, I'm going to suggest something here. Despite the fact that there is a motion and a second on the floor, and there was a, a motion that didn't quite make it through, I write, and I write things very carefully. I spend a lot of time wordsmithing words because they're very, very important. And I get a little nervous when we try to craft something sitting here in front of the public. What I would like to propose is that we, we take a vote on whether or not we accept the spirit of the resolution with the, the condition that it goes back for some careful word crafting, and it's just a technicality to approve the final thing at the next meeting. We will have achieved the purpose of letting the public know how we feel, we support or not support this issue. And the rest is just details, but we need to get it right.
But Ron, this is an important part of supporting it. We're not really saying anything tonight if we can't support it. What you're saying is that it's going to go back, and the attorney and maybe the mayor are going to wordsmith it. And then it's going to come back at the next meeting, when we're going to have a hot topic that is going to be, that's going to fill the room. And this is going to become, this is, this is not going to take, it's not going to get the importance that it needs that evening, which was one of the reasons why it was appropriate to have this on the agenda tonight.
Well.
Is Jerry going to, is the mayor going to come back with something other than what he has proposed that's to the spirit of exactly what we're saying? I can't, I don't understand how you could change the spirit. Either, we're either going to say that the police department is not going to participate in the aid, in the enforcement of federal immigration laws, or we're not. I mean, for me, it's pretty black and white. Either we are or we aren't. And, and I don't want us to participate in the enforcement of federal immigration laws. Period. Yes.
Well, I think, Ron, you, you had an internal conflict in what you just said, is that wording is important. And then you said, oh, it's just details, and we'll just come back and have the spirit with different words. The wording is important, and I think this, I think this wording is strong and appropriate. And therefore, I, I really feel that if we're going to show support from our city as a policy, especially to our immigrant community, but also to other minority communities that are subject to discrimination, that this is, we don't want our police department to be doing it. And I don't think they are doing it, but I think it's very important to say that publicly, and to, and the wording is important.
Okay, let's just, well, that's part of the problem. What I'm seeing here, my script we have here, would you repeat it again?
"Willets Police Department will not participate or aid in the enforcement of federal immigration laws, except in certain situations related to the detention of suspects involved in violent crimes or to ensure officer safety."
I'm not sure that works for me.
How about another? If you added, and Jim, going along the lines of what she said, except, and...
Do you want to add another exception?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out how to do that, but except when allowed by law?
No, I wouldn't want to do that.
Trying to think of how we would put that in. I guess.
You're taking it to...
I mean, when allowed by law. I mean, we currently, the policy that exists now is legal, and it's what's allowed by law. Now, albeit, there may be a conflict, depending on what the state passes, in which case, then that'll be retooled, and I'm sure the, there'll be advice on council as to which way to go with the policy. That's what happens with police policy procedure. It gets changed, depending on whether it's a court decision or a legislative decision, and then it's usually litigated. I mean.
Right, and laws can change. I want to leave this evening very clear to the public that this, this is where we stand, whether it's litigated, no matter what happens. We, the city council, are instructing our Willets Police Department not to participate or aid in the enforcement of federal immigration laws, except in certain situations related to the detention of suspects involved in violent crime or to ensure officer public safety. Period. Yes.
Yes.
I guess at this point, I don't think I could support it, but not based on, until I have a chance to work with Jim on it. I would, I guess, but let's go for the vote.
People before voting.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
From?
Yes.
Strong.
Strong.
Yeah.
Strong.
No.
Americanos?
No. All right, motion, Pam. All right. Thank you for speaking, though.
And thank you for being here again.
All right, how about?
Before we have to get up and speak, I haven't been here in a long time. In the old days, we'd have, there'd be an issue, and we'd line up, you know, thirty people or ten people, two people would line up, not having any idea what your opinions were, where you sat on it. Now, at least we get to hear what you're thinking before we speak, so that we can speak to, what do you think?
Democracy in action. All right, thank you for coming out. All right, so, ten minute break, five minute break. Public consent calendar. Item four.
I still move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion second. Any further discussion up here? Anybody from the public? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right. Information reports. Right to appeal persons who are dissatisfied with the decisions of the city council may have the right to review that decision by court. The city has adopted section 1094.6 of the Code of Civil Procedure, which generally limits to ninety days, the time within which the decisions of the city boards and agencies may be judicially challenged. We're wrong. Commissions, agencies, and authorities, we don't have anything in the planning, so city manager reports and recommendations.
I just have one brief thing to mention tonight. On the screen, we have displayed the city's temporary website while our new website project is underway. And this is, so we can post agendas primarily, and have some other information that we're mandated to have uploaded on our website. So it just, it's basically one page that contains contact information, and it's cityofwillets.org. But there's been some confusion about where to find our agendas. And so I wanted to just show people, when you go to this homepage, you're going to click up here for city council meetings, and it's going to take you to a calendar. And you will see meetings posted. The council meetings are the second and fourth Wednesday of every month. We had our budget workshop yesterday. If you click on that date or hover over it, you'll find the, the PDF agenda packet. And you can click on that and open it up to read the agenda packet.
Do you have the fifth, the twenty-fifth there? It isn't written in. The public forum?
It's just a, it's a, there's no agenda. It's just a public forum.
Oh.
And so that was noticed in the newspaper.
Okay, but you don't have that?
We kind of think. We can put it on there, but.
The draft ordinance is available on the site. Those are important documents.
Okay.
Yes.
There at the bottom.
There at the bottom.
Is there a link to the solar panels?
No. This, this site is just really serving as a temporary site while our overall website project is underway.
Okay, you, you will have that link.
Absolutely.
The website right off the, I'm glad to see we're creating it.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I wanted to show, show, tell.
So that's all you have?
Yes.
All right. City clerk.
Nothing, Stephen, thank you.
Finance?
Well, I could talk about our budget workshop that we had last night. It seems a little redundant to tell you what happened last night, but for the viewing audience, I will tell them that we had a budget meeting last night, and it was well attended by staff and council members. We have a general fund deficit, projected deficit of $608,000 as of today.
Well, you were busy today.
We were busy today. And water and sewer deficits, I think it was $264,000 and somewhere around that neighborhood and the other one. But we don't have final numbers yet, because we're waiting for our rate study to go out and, and see if we're going to have increases, and that will affect the deficit. Maybe that's it?
All right.
Unless you have more?
No, I gather you're still doing research on some of the stuff we talked about, so assuming it's ongoing. So, human resources?
Not at this time.
Legal?
No.
Okay, public safety?
I'll make this brief. So we hired a new CSO to, to provide more services to the public and to save some money, actually. He started Monday, Brandon Tripp. We're happy to have him back. He was a dispatcher for us, and then became a part-time dispatcher, worked for Medicineo County Sheriff's Office, and he's happy to be back. Second, we are working on purchasing equipment that will be paid for through the use of it to, to live scan to the public again, to, to be able to provide those services, so people from this, the greater Willets area, Cobalow, Laytonville, don't have to go all the way to Ukiah to be live scanned. So we hope to get that up in the next month or so.
What is CSO?
Community Service Officer. It's, some agencies call them, the community is kind of a misnomer, but it's, it's, some agencies call them Police Services Officers. So a CSO, our CSOs transport, they're armed. When they transport, they transport prisoners to the jail to free up officers, and we don't have to call an officer in on overtime to do it. They take away some of the officer's duties to do reports where there's no suspect or where there's no investigative leads. That is non-confrontational, to give the officers more time to work on more important and severe cases and to do investigations.
And parking enforcement and?
Parking enforcement, vehicle, ban of vehicle abatement, 290 registrants, that's sex offender registrants, narcotics registrants, arson registrants. They also do process and all the digital evidence. They also do process and all the digital evidence and discovery for the DA's office. I think the list goes on. They also do physical evidence, processing, and custody, and there's...
The reason that I ask that is the people out in TV land don't have a clue of what all of the little acronyms that we come up with here. And I just wanted you to make a point. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Scott, stop pouring away. The life scan...
I was trying to get this meeting over quicker.
We got plenty of time. The life scan, you said that it's going to be paid for through use?
Well, we, we, we aren't going to be charging a fee to do it.
Okay.
And it'll probably, we still have to do the fee thing, but it'll probably be less than the sheriff's department charged us, so.
I have a question, too. Is, is it possible for a CSO person to move up into a, well, an officer position?
They would have to go to a police academy. They have the same background, but they would have to be rebackgrounded again by state law, have a cycle, another psychological exam, as well as a medical exam for a police officer, because it's slightly different for civilian employers.
Okay. So there is a possibility of someone wanting to move that direction, and they can just get more training and...
That is correct.
Thank you. All right. Thanks, guys. And community development?
Dusty Dooley, city planner. Tomorrow night, right here at city hall, from five thirty to seven thirty, we're going to have the community meeting workshop on the public draft of the comprehensive medical cannabis ordinance. There will be a brief presentation by staff, providing an overview of the ordinance, followed by a public comment period. Everyone's encouraged to attend. Please come help us shape this very important document for, for our community. I was going to say that we'll have cookies, but after last night's budget meeting, that might not be true.
All right. We've got to be careful what kind of... Code enforcement?
Nothing.
All right. Public Works at Engineering, D. Discussion Possible Approval Plan Specifications for Holly Street Sewer Main Replacement. Everybody has a copy of that?
So this is something that has been needing to happen, and we budgeted for it, and are just seeking authorization to advertise for the informal bids.
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
I still move.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, in a second. The, I, I just, I just, we need to review this slightly, you know, the money involved. Did I see somewhere here that money was not available, or it was coming from something else?
We're reallocating the funds from a project that wasn't completed this year. So we were going to use the funds from that project.
Okay, the Main Street Sewer...
Thank you.
Repairs.
Thank you.
Okay, so, so you're looking at reallocate, what, when, there was seventy-five thousand dollars allocated to the Main Street.
That's it.
And you're looking at spending no more than fifteen thousand on that project, according to your agenda summary.
This is not my agenda.
Which means that you'll have sixty thousand that could be used to start the project during this fiscal year, last week in June. So then you're looking at additional one hundred and sixty-four thousand to budget the next, and...
We did.
We did.
Okay. Any further discussion? Sounds like we need to do this, otherwise, and again, we'll be completing part of this in the next budget cycle.
Right.
All right. And here, nothing from the public? Bring it back up here, are all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. All right. City council and committee reports. We amended the agenda, and you have a letter that I had Sarah Rounds from the League of Cities sent out an action alert. Apparently, the trailer bill that everybody's been hearing about came out, and I guess the background is that the, on the governor's side, he's trying to combine both the medical marijuana and the recreational marijuana rules into one rule. But the problem is, under the medical marijuana rules, we, as cities, had gained a lot of say-so over certain things. And if this passes, we're going to lose some say-so over some things in our communities, or we'll be forced to pass certain local legislation to prevent things, as opposed to right now, it's retained in the medical marijuana laws.
Well, but if we, if we pass the local, you know, if we pass the local laws to retain certain things, wouldn't this still be trumped by the, this...
Well, some of this, if you read through some of this...
I'm always concerned about this from the get-go, and I, I mentioned it all along, and I think we need to do this. I like the reference to the, the fact that Prop sixty-four was a voter initiative, whereas the MRSA was a legislative act, which implies that there's a little more thought going into it. And that, that needs to be the survival in the legislation.
I mean, all along, I think we've, we've wanted that local control, so that if we wanted to allow parts, or some of this, thank you.
No, I, I appreciate that you brought forth the, this letter in opposition of Prop sixty-four, and I support this letter.
It doesn't actually oppose Prop sixty-four, it opposes...
Oh, I'm sorry.
The trailer bill.
Trailer bill, sorry.
And this would go to the governor and our legislature, so they know that, because this, this apparently is going to be discussed this week, and so, or actually, or this, maybe it's this month. It's, it's coming up, and what they wanted was, normally, we miss being able to write letters because we're on a off, off-meeting schedule, but since this came through the way it did, I thought we could act on it now and send our letter through. So... It, it doesn't necessarily limit how the state handles implementation of Prop sixty-four, but it just makes sure that all of the local... Protections. Protections that are in the MRSA bill, at least, continue to be in effect, instead of getting wiped out. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the important thing. I mean, here, we're going through this process of crafting our ordinance, the county's crafted theirs, and then they have to lose some of this. I brought this up with some county folks today, and they said, well, they're waiting to see what happens, and they'll...
It also repills the medical marijuana ID program card, which is, I know Madge remembers that if you have the medical, the California medical ID card, then you're self-tax exempt from any medical marijuana. However, if you have a recommendation from your doctor and not the ID card, then the marijuana or cannabis is...
Taxable.
Taxable. If this repills that, so you wouldn't be, it would be as if everyone had a medical marijuana card.
It's just going to really mess everything up and get back to the old days.
So Adrian, if consensus is just to authorize me to sign this and send it in?
I guess we should take a vote, though.
Okay, so, all right, do we have a vote on sending the letter and authorizing me?
Is there a motion?
Sorry, a motion.
I'll second the motion.
You need retraining.
I'm tired, yeah. All right, a motion by Madge, second by Sabrina? Did I read that right? Okay. Any further discussion? Not all those in favor of authorizing me to send the letter?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. All opposed. So, we're still on, on A, League of Cities. I went to the League of Cities meeting in Fort Bragg, and basically, there were a couple of, of, the Reverend District, I think, is it Reverend District? I'm trying to think of it.
Reverend Empire Division.
Division, asked for some consensus on the legislative subgroup, and wanted to send some letters on some bills out there. And, sorry, some of these are actually very important. One of them is California Clean Water Climate Coastal Protection and Outdoor Access for All Act. They were looking for support. There's some money there, and some of the communities would qualify. I think the gist is that some of the, they advocate for programs that may not necessarily affect us, because we're not on the coast, but because some of the cities would stand to benefit some money. So that was AB eighteen. AB eight ninety, Local Land Use Initiatives Environmental Review, would require that proponents of all local initiatives, regardless of their subject or scope, request the city to conduct environmental review, in addition to preparing a title and summary of proposed initiative. They kind of saw this as kind of tying cities' hands, and so they wanted opposition to that. The other one, which I think we sent the letter, I think, was AB twelve fifty, county and city's contracts would prohibit any city or county from contracting out any work, until the city or county can show that the work would save the entity money. And so there was a consensus in that group to oppose that. Public Record Supervisor Records Fines would require public agencies to identify as supervisor of public records. We shall review and, reviewing determination by the agency that requested records is denied. It basically forces us to appoint a new position of record supervisor for the city. And so that was an oppose. That was AB fourteen seventy-nine. AB fifteen oh five, Land Use Zoning Restrictions would authorize legislative body of any city or county, or to adopt ordinances to require, as a condition of development of residential rental units, that the development includes certain percentage of residential units affordable to an occupied moderate income, lower income, very low income, and extremely low income housing. Goes towards housing, and everybody was in support of that, and then there was some workforce housing opportunity zone, and they would authorize all governments to establish a workforce housing opportunity zone for preparing EIR, CEQA. There was support to that. Sorry, I'm just kind of, and then the one that I thought was really big was the wireless telecommunications facility, which I didn't think was a big deal, but it basically, what they were looking for opposition on this, because it would mean that the telecoms could put small cell towers anywhere in the city, on our existing poles. We wouldn't be able to oppose it, and the max we could charge them would be eight hundred and fifty dollars on a lease agreement.
I can see why that was opposed.
I guess it's really big down in the city, where they wanted access, but it basically means that we wouldn't be able to say, you can't put a cell tower right next to your daycare. And, and I guess there, there are mini-cell towers, but they showed a picture of them, they're probably no bigger than that table, and they basically bolt them up to a city sign, or whatever. The concern that the league had was that, because we couldn't oppose it, then Dusty couldn't write conditions in there that, that if it fell on somebody, or that they carry so much insurance, or something like that. The way it was poorly written, so that's all I have. So I guess Mendocino Council of Governments, EMCO.
EMCO did not meet.
EDFC.
There's a meeting tomorrow. I appreciate that Madge is going to attend via phone on my behalf, and I believe Adrian may have an update?
I don't have any updates. I know what is on the agenda to be, to be discussed, and that same item is on the agenda for the West Company Board meeting tomorrow afternoon that I will be participating in. And what that proposal is, is a merger between the two entities.
We should have more to report, I imagine, at the next meeting.
Yes.
MTA? Oh, actually, MSWA? MSWA? MSWA hasn't met since our last meeting. And MTA?
Hasn't met.
LAPCO, we, I think I reported on that the last time. It'll meet first Monday in June. Finance Committee, we met. Water and Wastewater Systems Committee has not rewrite Ed. I think we had a meeting, we had to reschedule it because of a conflict, and...
Yeah, I mean, we can get together next week.
Okay.
With a coordination on that.
Yeah. And Ad Hoc Caltrans, nothing, and cannabis, and that's tomorrow. JPA feasibility, no. And museum advisory board?
Nothing.
All right. Actually, I probably took number eleven already, so...
You did?
Yeah, that was, I took it under the League of Cities, so that was, you authorized me to sign the letter, so. No ordinances, any good in welfare? You should mention the success of the Willets Walk for Health, that was dedicated to Lynn Kennedy, and I managed to get part of it, five miles. Oh, but it was, it was really very nice, and you wanted to mention it.
Sure. So, so that walk was held, it was five miles, and it was a pleasure to see so many people out to walk and to be healthy, and also to honor Lynn Kennedy. Everybody had red carnations on, I saw, I saw Madge there, and a few others here, and then there was a wonderful write-up in the Willets Weekly. And I have to say that when I read the write-up, I teared up thinking of Lynn, and how she, she would have just been glowing if she'd seen what was written about her, so, thank you to Willets Weekly for the coverage.
I just wanted to mention, too, that a couple of people from Willets Economic Localization met today with the Chamber of Commerce Board, and I believe, I'm hoping that they are deciding to co-sponsor the Thousand Sunflowers Project. And at some point, I don't know whether it would make any sense for the city to co-sponsor it as well. It doesn't involve any money, right, because it's all being done by volunteers, and people are donating sunflowers, and the idea is to get them up and down, not just Main Street, but that's one of the main focuses, and then also have some really nice plantings at the exit, so that Willets becomes known as a flower mecca.
Madge, you would be happy to know that Spare Time Supply donated sixty pots to the school, and we are planting sunflowers in each one of them.
Oh, fabulous. Okay, thank you.
We'll see if those get planted all over the county.
Yeah, they're also offering a discount to merchants that need to buy supplies, if they need a, you know, planter, or barrel, or soil, or whatever. So we're hoping to get a lot of buy-in, and excited about it.
You know, you can't put those, if you have a business in Main Street, you can't put those on the, on front of your store.
If it's off of the sidewalk, maybe, you know, there's...
Sid, Caltrans owns right up to the majority of people's doors.
It's a good thing I'm on Commercial Street.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that, that's the thing we all like.
Hanging plants would be allowed, right? The baskets? It's been done before? I defer to the plant experts. Does anybody else have anything else for the good of the order? All right, a motion to adjourn?
I still move.
All right.
Second.